This regular session of the New Market Town Council to order for March 6, 2024. And we will begin always, as always, with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Counselor White, if you would lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor. Item two on our agenda is roll call, and it looks like all of our councilors are present this evening. And item three is our public forum. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak this evening? Don't be shy, just for the heck of it. Okay, seeing none, I will close public forum at 7:01. And item four on our agenda this evening is our annual town report dedication. I'm delighted to read this today. Before I begin, New Market is stronger when we all work together to make it so. And our town is a wonderful place to live and to work because groups of people, large and small, governmental and community, official and unofficial, care enough to try to make it better every day. And Blooming New Market is one of those groups. With great pleasure, we dedicate this year's annual town report to Blooming New Market. Neither snow, nor rain, nor heat, nor gloom of night stays these couriers from the swift completion of their appointed rounds. The dedicated volunteers work tirelessly, year after year, beautifying our town with an immeasurable amount of plant wisdom and genuine talent. Blooming New Market is a nonprofit group of volunteers who plant and maintain public gardens around the town of New Market. The group maintains the following public garden spaces: the Ash Swamp Traffic Strip, Jerry Avenue, the garden across from Town Hall, the granite planter in the downtown park, the wall garden across from the mills, the library garden near the rear of the building, and the cannon at the intersection of Route 108 and Bay Road. Each member is blessed with a green thumb and is not afraid to get their hands dirty. They do so much more than beautify our town. These members include Joan Diurio, the Chair, Susan Gonnett, the Vice Chair, Gail Nostrum, the Treasurer, Cindy Towns, the Secretary, and Susan Wassle, the Town Liaison. Blooming New Market volunteers not only plant and maintain the six public garden spaces, they also sponsor community educational events, maintain a seed lending library, donate gardening books for adults and children to the New Market Public Library, hold a spring plant sale as a fundraiser every year, offer grants to community groups interested in creating gardens, design and display elaborately crafted scarecrows in the fall, and take field trips to areas, gardens, and nurseries. We thank you all very much for the smiles you give us when we walk or drive by one of the beautiful garden spaces you created and continue to maintain. Blooming New Market, thank you so much, and we are so pleased to dedicate this year's town report to you. Thank you very again, Blooming New Market. Would you like to say something, please?
We've been around since 1997. We started as the New Market Gardeners, and then we came to a point where we had to change our name, and we picked Blooming New Market because it seemed like something we were doing anyway, helping New Market. And it ebbs and flows with how many people we have. This year, we have somewhere between 15 and 17 people, about a third of which are all new, which is really nice. And we welcome anybody who wants to help. We are having one of our talks this coming Monday at the library. Pollinator Pathways people are coming to the library at 5:00. It's March 11, and the public as well. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Monday, 5:00 PM, 3:11, Pollinator Pathways. Okay, the next item on our agenda, item five, is our public hearing. And we are having a public hearing this evening on ordinance number 42324, 2023-2024, revisions to the Administrative Code.
Yeah.
Do I need to motion?
Nope.
Okay, so I'll open the public hearing now. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this?
As the staff person who wrote it, just for the explanation, the town charter states that every so often, the town manager shall draft and submit to the town council recommended revisions to the Administrative Code. The Administrative Code is what defines agencies and the functions and the duties of each department. It's also by state R S A that we have to do that. And we hadn't had a substantive update in a number of years, so I recommended a few changes. First, it places code enforcement under the new, we call Department of Community Planning, Department of Community Planning and Community Development overseen by the Director of Community Development, formerly the Town Planner. For years, the Building Inspector answered directly to the Town Manager. And it also moves IT and Media Services, which is now the new name for the former Channel 13, Channel 8, under the Department of Finance and Administration. In addition, Facilities returns to Public Works, and it creates a division of engineering, which we didn't have previously. So it's just really updating to where we are today.
Thank you. If there's no one from the public who wishes to speak, then I will close our public hearing at 7:07. Okay, moving right along. Item number six is a town council to consider acceptance of minutes, and we have three sets of minutes this evening. The first is the February 7, 2024 sealed non-public minutes, and I would accept a motion to approve those minutes.
So move.
I will second.
Excellent. And one, if you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Glazberg?
Aye.
Counselor Lamontina?
Aye.
Counselor Dorblu?
Aye.
Counselor White?
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone?
Aye.
Counselor Ward?
Aye.
Counselor Conley?
Aye.
Motion passes 7:0.
Excellent. Our second set of minutes is the February 21, 2024, non-public minutes. I'd accept a motion to approve those.
I will make the motion. I'll second.
Excellent, thank you. And these are non-public, so if you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Glazberg?
Aye.
Counselor Lamontina?
Aye.
Counselor Dormblu?
Aye.
Counselor White?
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone?
Aye.
Counselor Ward?
Aye.
Counselor Conley?
Abstain.
Motion passes 6:01.
Excellent. And our last set of minutes is the official, the regular session set of minutes for February 21, 2024 Town Council meeting, and I would accept a motion to approve those.
I will make the motion.
Excellent, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions or revisions or changes? Okay, seeing none, if you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Glazberg?
Aye.
Counselor Lamontina?
Aye.
Counselor Dormblu?
Aye.
Counselor White?
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone?
Aye.
Counselor Ward?
Aye.
Counselor Conley?
Abstain.
Motion passes 6:01.
Excellent. Item seven on our agenda is the report of the town manager, and so at this time, I will turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the council is aware, I was on vacation last week, so I don't have a written report, but I do have some items I did want to report on. First, you should have received an email from me today that the change in the date for the goal-setting session, it's now going to be on May 22 from 6:00 PM here. Primax asked if they could change the date for scheduling issues on their side. Just a reminder that on Tuesday, from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM here at Town Hall, is Election Day. We do have the schedule filled for councilors to work that day. We will need a quorum at the end of the close of the polls to seal the boxes and to process the ballots. Interesting, today, I did get to see the poll books, which will be used this time to be tested out, which is an iPad that when you go to ask for your ballot, they'll be able to, if you wish to, you do not have to, they'll be able to scan your license, it'll pull right up who you are, and if you're a registered voter in the town, and it'll print out a receipt, and you go get your ballot that way. So it's to speed up the process. I was quite impressed with it, and I hope the state actually moves forward and allows it. Right now, it's in testing stage. For the voters, it's not, nothing with your vote is connected to this iPad. The iPad is connected to the internet, but all it is is public information, which everybody already out there, which is the voter's role, has nothing to do with the ballot boxes, just to put that out there. Ballot boxes are not connected to any network or outside situation. There was just some concern over that. Finally, yesterday, I was approached by the town engineer and the public works director. There's been some issues with the retaining wall behind the police department and beside Sunrise Sunset Center. Currently, it's giving, I don't want to say giving way, but it's in dire shape. So they came forward and would like to remove the wall and just replace it with a slope grate, slope grate in that area. They are going to have to move a memorial and some plantings, but they just moved to the north side. The budget, it's already, it's already in the operating budget since we did have a quieter winter so far, and we've already talked to the police department and the recreation department. I'm bringing it up to the council because I know as part of the facility study, there was discussion of the future of the senior center, and I didn't want any confusion out there when they see heavy trucks showing up all of a sudden thinking that we're moving forward with this. If anything, we're trying to solidify it until such time as we make a decision on the facilities. Everything's under, there is no need for a vote, but I just wanted to bring it to the council. If there was any questions, I did email it to you earlier today as well.
Counselor White.
What, in particular, what memorial is being moved?
Come on up.
I honestly don't recall the name, but it's something that the seniors did. And when they did it, I don't know if you're familiar, there's a flagpole there, the guardrail runs all the way down there, and they put it way up, like to access it, you have to walk all the way out to the end of the road and then come in, or jump the guardrail, which I don't think they do. But there's two benches. I think it's dedicated to more than one individual, but there's two benches, a flagpole, and a little plaque. And we're just going to keep it in the general area. We're going to move it about 50 feet, and it'll be near the end of the guardrail, so it'll be a little easier to get to. So it'll be essentially in the same general area, but it will be just taken apart, palletized, and then put back once the work is done, and the weather's a little drier and nicer.
Okay.
But I honestly don't know the name of it, per se.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I had one. So if we're considering sort of renovations to the space because of the facility study, is this something that could hold until that time, or is this urgent and needs to be done right now?
So that was the discussion that we had in-house, was whether or not to replace it with a retaining wall or to do the slope. My feeling in talking with department heads was, don't invest the money into new blocks when the slope will hold it until such time as we make a decision on the facilities.
Okay. Excellent. Seeing no more questions, were there any other items for you?
I have nothing else.
Okay. Then we will move on to committee reports. Are there any committee reports this evening? Counselor Glazberg?
The Arts and the Parks Commission met. It's more of a rec head thing, but the Arts in the Park is going to be on this year. Right now, they have funding just for a few weeks in July, dates to be determined, but it's the concert series in Shonda Park. More on that as they know more. We have applied for a grant from the Lamprey River Advisory Committee. It was a grant for $7,500, and they, one of our members from the Arts Commission sits on that, and we thought that would be enough for the meeting, I think, to answer questions when they went to vote, but it was not. They wanted somebody else to be there to answer questions for them, so they pushed it back, and they're going to have another vote and discussion upon the 19th. Somebody will be present, but it's not already sitting there.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for Counselor Glazberg? Okay, are there any other committee reports? Counselor Lamontina?
So, energy and environment. If you recall, last December, the council authorized the launching of Community Power. In January, letters were sent out to all the residents of the town. In February, end of February, Eversource actually pulled the trigger, have some statistics. So there were 3,970 accounts that were eligible to be switched over. Of that, 42 accounts opted out, that's roughly about 1.06%. However, there were 67 accounts or unaccounted for people that opted in. So we actually have 3,995 accounts going into Community Power.
Nice.
Overall, it's worked out pretty good so far.
That's great.
It's about the same number of parcels we have, as well as about 3,500, so, you know, there's more services in the building, so, yeah, it was a good plan.
Okay. Questions for Counselor Lamontina? Counselor?
I noticed that you had a small number of people who took the environmental option, right? Is that something that people can change at any time?
Absolutely.
At any time? So it isn't like once a quarter or something like that?
You can opt up or opt down at any time. It'll take effect with the next media reading that you have.
Right.
May I make a comment on that?
Does that answer your question?
Just to go along with that, there's actually have been preliminary discussions, if you remember during the pandemic, that we had a friendly wager between Durham, Dover, and New Market on how many people could get, most people just do the census. There's also one, how many gallons, pints of blood we could donate for, we are discussing with communities that are in there in the area, how many people we can get to switch to the environmental one. We're really preliminary, but we're just trying to get people interested in it.
I do have those stats for Durham as well. I didn't print them. I can.
Yeah, but yeah, I know, we're talking, it's probably Portsmouth, Dover, Durham, New Market, some of those.
Exeter, right.
Yeah, so, on discussions.
That's good to know. Keep those posted. Any other questions or comments for Counselor Lamontina? All right, any other committee reports? Okay, seeing none, then we will move on to resolutions and ordinances. In the second reading in this evening, there are two. The first is ordinance number 42324, revisions to the Administrative Code, and at this time, I would accept a motion to approve this ordinance.
I will make the motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Excellent. Town manager already spoke on this. Do you have anything else you'd like to end?
No, I mean, one of the things they say in management is that, what's the rule of seven, you only should have seven direct reports. This will get me to six and a half department heads, because two of them are one person. But before I had, I think of the highest item was 11. So this is just going to streamline it, and makes, it reflects what most municipalities do. If not, it's still robust, it'd be a little bit more streamlining of it. But, yeah, it's already what we do in practice, so it's just codifying it.
Any questions for the town manager or comments on the ordinance? Counselor Dormblu?
Thank you. I just have one question on the organizational chart. The, does the grant management that is housed under Community Development include all of the grants that are received by the town, or what?
No, it's more Community Development block grants are going to be falling under there, that's what. And in our actuality, that probably could be 50/50 between Community Development as well as Engineering, because they are overseeing a lot. Not and water and sewer, because it's a whole different group of block. But this is more Community Development block grants, so any assistance with the Housing Authority, Recreation, those kind of grant management.
And that, so that is a, an expertise that's housed there?
Traditionally, it is, yeah. Yeah, most planners and or Community Development directors have that background, and I know a current one does, so.
And is that an expertise that would also be available to town residents to take advantage of if there were questions?
No, that's, it's a government entity, one only.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the ordinance? Okay, I think it's a good idea. I appreciate the work of the town manager to continually think about, you know, the organization of how the town runs and to continue to streamline it. And I learned something new about the rule of seven, so, good day all the way around. If there are no other comments, one, if you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Glazberg?
Aye.
Counselor Lamontina?
Aye.
Counselor Dormblu?
Aye.
Counselor White?
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone?
Aye.
Counselor Ward?
Aye.
Counselor Conley?
Aye.
Motion passes 7:0.
Okay, next item is, in the second reading, is resolution number 2023-2024-33, that is using the compensated absences trust funds. And at this time, I would accept a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2023/24-33, that using the compensated absence trust fund to reimburse the town for retired compensated absence pays?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Excellent. I know this is prepared by Mr. Chapman. Is this something you can speak to this evening?
Sure. Number of years ago, when we first got here, we were, the budget was getting hit when we'd have long-term retirements. A lot of sick time, vacation time built up over. And instead of doing that, we started putting money aside, so when somebody retires, we just go to the capital reserve fund, withdraw it to offset the costs, and so it doesn't impact the operating budgets. This year, we had a longtime police officer retire, and it, instead of hitting the budget, we were withdrawing those funds to offset that.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Any questions for the town manager or comments, commentary, discussion on the resolution? Okay. Quite good.
I just want to, I found the number, I was looking for it, but it wasn't in there. Currently, there's $40,195 as of October, I'm sorry, that was a year or so ago, so it's probably a little bit more. It's about $50,000 in that fund.
Okay. Counselor?
I was just going to say congratulations to the police officer who was retiring.
Yeah, that's wonderful. All right, seeing no other comments, if you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Glazberg?
Aye.
Counselor Lamontina?
Aye.
Counselor Dormblu?
Aye.
Counselor White?
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone?
Aye.
Counselor Ward?
Aye.
Counselor Conley?
Aye.
Motion passes 7:0.
Okay. The next item on our agenda, item 11, is the town council to consider nominations, appointments, elections, and resignations. And we have quite a slate this afternoon, this evening, for which I am truly delighted. The first is Juliana Tyson for reappointment to the Conservation Commission with a term expiring in April 2027, and I would accept a motion to approve that reappointment.
So.
Second.
Excellent. Is there any kind of discussion about Juliana's reappointment? I'm delighted that she wants to continue doing the work, and I support it. If there's no other discussion, if you could call the roll.
Counselor Glazberg?
Aye.
Counselor Lamontina?
Aye.
Counselor Dormblu?[1573.83]
Aye.
Council Blackstone?
Abstain.
Council Ward?
Aye.
Council Conley?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0-1.
Excellent. And the second appointment is for Dale Pike. He's to see to the Ad Hoc Riverfront Advisory Committee with a term expiring in April 2027. And I would accept a motion to approve that appointment.
I'll approve, I nominate Mr. Pike.
Do I have a second?
I will second.
Excellent. Any, any discussion on Mr. Pike's appointment? Council Lamatina?
I would add, Mr. Pike is an excellent member, hard-working member of the Advisory Committee.
I would agree. Seeing no questions or discussion, if you could call the roll.
Council Blaisberg?
Aye.
Council Lamatina?
Aye.
Council Dorblu?
Aye.
Council White?
Aye.
Council Blackstone?
Aye.
Council Ward?
Aye.
Council Conley?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Okay, item number three, boy, I'm worried I'm going to mess up the last name. Lee Vader, or Vader, to the Zoning Board of Adjustment alternate member with a term expiring April 2027. And I would accept a motion to approve this appointment.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Lee Vader to the zoning board as an alternate member.
Excellent, do I have a second?
Yeah, I will second.
Excellent. Any discussion? Oh, wonderful. Are you Mr. Vader? Vader, thank you so much. Vader, okay. Mr. Vader, would you care to speak about your candidacy? You do not have to, but if you'd like to, please, you certainly may just approach the, approach the podium. Okay. Don't let him hear you. Any discussion on Mr. Vader? I'm also excited about, about Mr. Vader's willingness to serve the Zoning Board of Adjustment and support his candidacy. If there is no other discussion, if you could call the roll, please.
Council Blaisberg?
Aye.
Council Lamatina?
Aye.
Council Dorblu?
Aye.
Council White?
Aye.
Council Blackstone?
Aye.
Council Ward?
Aye.
Council Conley?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. The next appointment, or in this case, a resignation. Item D on our nominations, appointments, elections, and resignations is Jenny Olet, resignation from the Energy and Environment Committee membership. It's a membership expiration April 2025, but I would, is this when she'd be resigning? Or is this, would this be effective immediately?
Effective immediately.
That's what I'm guessing, okay. And I would accept a, would accept a motion to approve this resignation with regret.
I will make a motion to accept the resignation of Jenny Olet.
Okay.
I will second the motion.
Excellent. Any, any discussion? Okay, if you could call the roll, please.
Council Blaisberg?
Aye.
Council Lamatina?
Aye.
Council Dorblu?
Aye.
Council White?
Aye.
Council Blackstone?
Aye.
Council Ward?
Aye.
Council Conley?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Excellent. And our final appointment this evening is a reappointment, and that is Deborah Smith, is a reappointment to the Arts, Culture, and Tourism Commission with a term expiring April 2027. And I would accept a motion to approve that reappointment.
So move.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Excellent. Any, any discussion on Ms. Smith's reappointment? Council Blaisberg?
Ms. Smith is, is an asset to the Arts, Culture, and Tourism Commission, and I always support her. What is it?
Reappointment.
Reappointment, sorry.
Excellent. I think so too. Any other discussion? Okay, one, if you could call the roll, please.
Council Blaisberg?
Aye.
Council Lamatina?
Aye.
Council Dorblu?
Aye.
Council White?
Aye.
Council Blackstone?
Aye.
Council Ward?
Aye.
Council Conley?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Excellent. Congratulations to everyone on their reappointments. Ms. Olet, we will miss you on the Energy and Environment Committee. But to everyone else who has applied and been accepted, we appreciate your service to the town of Newmarket. Newmarket is great because you make it so, so we are, we are in your debt. Okay, item 12, resolutions and ordinances in the first reading. And there is just one this evening. And that is Resolution 2023-2024-34, Water Treatment Plant Acid Room Improvements. Whereas the water treatment plant acid room has deteriorated due to hydrochloric acid off gassing fumes, okay. And whereas the water department has received a settlement agreement for $245,000 to replace equipment and make improvements to the acid room. And whereas the water department received the lowest bid from T-Buck Construction for $253,816 to perform the work. Now therefore, let it be resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that the Newmarket Town Council authorizes the town manager to enter into an agreement with T-Buck Construction for the sum of $253,000 and approve a total project cost of $259,000 for construction and contingency, sponsored by Chair Conley for request, first reading March 6, 2024. Okay. Item 13 is new business and correspondence. First item is correspondence, is there any correspondence to the town council?
There is none.
Okay. And item B is closing comments by the town councilors. Do any councilors have any comments this evening? Council Dorblu?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I want to refer back to the conversation we had at the last Town Council meeting regarding Coast's role and how the town wishes to move forward with public transportation. We had discussed the possibility of appointing an ad hoc committee. I am wondering how we move that forward today so that the committee can begin its work.
We can introduce a resolution to create a committee, determine the membership. And then as soon as the council approves the committee, then they would appoint it. So it could be as soon as the first meeting in April. The two readings of a resolution. We can, I mean, in the meantime, we can do homework and get everything ready.
Okay. So it needs to be a resolution?
It does.
It can't just be a, a motion to, to create one?
Counsel, the charter states that everything has to be either a resolution or an ordinance. And whenever we create a committee, we pass it by a resolution.
Okay.
But we can, I can work with you on one.
I would, I would appreciate that, yes.
And then what it sounds like is that, that would not stop, like you said, people from doing homework? People from preparing? It just would prohibit people meeting to make decisions?
For example, we received the sample questions from Coast for a survey before I left. My, it's on my agenda tomorrow to try to come up with a survey to get that ready to go.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you, Council Dorblu. Did you have a follow-up?
Yes. Just regarding the survey, I think it may be something that we leave till the ad hoc committee is in place.
Leave that.
Council?
Also, just going to the coast, I know we had, I know you've been on vacation, so you maybe not have gotten to this yet, but talking to other towns about their potential interest or, you know, maybe lack of?
Yeah, I haven't seen anybody yet, so.
Okay, yeah, I figured you, yeah.
Yeah.
Excellent. Other closing comments? My only closing comment is to remind folks that Monday at 5:00 PM on March 11 at the library is the Pollinator's Pathway Talk by Blooming Newmarket, and really hope everybody, everyone can go. Do you like to announce it?
And on Tuesday, we will be having our town election, where you will be able to vote for public officials such as ourselves and for other, and for town budget and other warrant articles, along with the school, old district and school budget as well.
Thank you, Council Ward. Any other closing comments? All right, our next meeting is March 20, 2024. And if there is no objection, I will consider us adjourned. Thank you very much, councilors.
Thank you.
And thank you.